All right, let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, welcome to our county commission meeting. Today's date, April 20th. Going to look for, a couple reminders here. Silence your cell phones, don't want to be embarrassed. We have the meeting documents over by Commissioner Heiburger. And if you need a listening device, Mr. Dewey can help you out. I'm going to look for a motion to amend our agenda.
And make a motion to amend the agenda to remove item 21.
Second.
Motion to amend in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Now I need a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks, Jean, for letting me make the second motion.
Look for a motion to approve our commission meeting minutes for April 6th, 2021.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have bills to be paid in the amount of $5,904,971.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Comments? Mr. Barth.
Today includes 4.236 million for state motor vehicle funds. 9,100 for death fees, 7,300 for birth fees. They get us coming and going and that. Then we had 390,000 for the chiller that we're installing in our heating plant. And Metro Communications got 186,000.
Part of our ongoing commitment to the 911 service. All righty, so we have bills to be paid. Motion in a second. We have one commissioner that will be recused. Commissioner Bender. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All righty. We have reports, again, over by Commissioner Heiburger. Mislenious reports. And we're going to move on to personnel actions. Need a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Right, we have about seven abatements recommended for approval. I think we could take A and B together since they're the same individual, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Chris Lala equalization, yep. Before you, we've got item A is Josh Scoggin. Parcel number 76406 for the 2019 property tax in the amount of $1,148.07. And then same parcel, but for the 2020 property tax in the amount of $1,245.48. These ones here are not our office errors, but they're errors. So this one here, the individual purchased a property on a contract for deed that was not recorded. And we had, and when we get a copy of that contract, we applied owner occupied. Well, then they went from that contract into a deed that was recorded. And now in our system, it appears as if it's a name change. So we'd mailed out the application and never got it back. So it was removed. However, he was the owner under a contract for deed, and it was just a continuing. So we're recommending approval of these.
So I'm going to look for a motion to approve A and B. Same parcel number, two different years.
Second.
Call the roll.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bennigan.
Heiburger.
Bart.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now.
Get a clarification. Who were you at the first? And who was the second?
Maybe me.
Can't remember.
I'll take the blame.
So now C is a veteran exemption for parcel 17439. We'll take that one alone.
Yep, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $1,083.01. One cent. Yeah, this one here is our office error where we had it coded as an ID, or as a IP, which is a paraplegic veteran. And then when we were going through our system and proofing and cleaning and everything, we came across it and it inadvertently got changed to an ID, which is a permanently and totally disabled veteran. And there's a difference between the two. The paraplegic veteran is exempt, period. The ID exemption code is the $150,000 limit. So they went from 100% exempt to the 150. And so it was brought to our attention. So we're recommending an abatement on this one as well.
Okay, so look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Bennigan. Roll call vote, please.
Bender. Aye. Karski.
Aye.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Bart.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to take D, E, and F. They're all for the same individual, same parcel number for property taxes in 2018, 19, and 20. Parcel number 52548.
Yep, 2018 property taxes in the amount of $2,197.82. 2019 taxes in the amount of $2,342.44. And the 20 taxes, the amount of $2,251.63. This is just an individual that had finally received his approval of his date of service in permanent and total, and it was back. So once that happens, then we go back and do an abatement on these. So we're recommending approval on these as well.
Motion to approve items D, E, and F, which is parcel 52548.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Karski.
Aye.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Bart.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Motion carries. All righty. Thank you, Chris. We have a notice and request, public hearing for the first reading of an ordinance providing for the establishment of speed zones on Minnehaw County Highway System. Jacob. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. So this ordinance adds two new locations to our speed zones that we have in the county. One is the new portion of County Highway 136 that attaches to Veterans Parkway. There's a small portion to the west over to the city limits. And there's a small portion to the east over to where the township takes over, Redwood Boulevard. That's currently signed at 45 miles an hour. So this ordinance just updates what's already existing. The other location is south of State Highway 42, just east of Rowena. There's a very poor sight distance issue just south of SD 42 and north of that township road. The township brought it to our attention that they're concerned with some bus crossings at this location. So we looked at the vertical alignment of this particular hill and determined that it would be properly signed at 30 miles an hour.
That's 111?
Yeah, that would be County Highway 111.
Okay.
Motion to approve the public hearing.
Second. Motion and a second. And do we have, do we set a date for this then?
Where's the date? Yeah, shouldn't there be a date? No.
They did some research on us. And because it's the highway ordinance and what it is, there just has to be a first and a second reading.
And they have to be separated by at least five days.
Okay, so we don't have a specific date for it then? Okay. Sounds good. We have a motion.
Next week.
Okay, so it's.
Question, clarification question. So our agenda item says public hearing. Is it a public hearing or is it just a second reading?
It would be a public hearing for a second reading.
Okay, I will make a motion for a public hearing for next week for a.
It'd be April 27th.
April 27th. Did we get it up? For the second reading, a public meeting for a second reading next week, 27th.
Exactly what I'd second.
Oh, my goodness.
Public hearing just means we would take public input at that meeting. So if anybody has input for this speed limit change, speed zone changes, next week would be the week to show up for that. So motion and a second. Don't leave Jacob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Just a quick question on 111.
Yep.
What's going on with that road? It's a two-mile county road that has issues. Have we decided to do anything on that?
So we brought a proposal in front of commission a couple of years ago to do a design and reconstruct that portion of the roadway. There is, if you could scroll down to the next image on that agenda. So the east-west road right there, that's lightened color, is the township road. Just north of that where those two farmstead driveways are, that's right about the top of the hill. The grading project would have to go from just south of that township road to about the north end of that west shelter belt. It would probably be in the area of $700,000 to reconstruct that hill to make that a proper roadway. And then in the southern mile, there's, I would say, three other locations where we'd have to do a similar type regrading. So it's probably about in the need of a full reconstruction. The last time DJ and I had talked, it was discussed that maybe this would be a portion of the road to go back to the township someday. That would have to obviously involve more talks with the commission and the townships themselves, but.
Okay, so it's blacktop currently. And the red portion is what we're going to take down to a 30 mile an hour speed limit just out of safety and concern and that township and sight distances, et cetera. Okay.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Jacob.
Yes, sir.
So on Highway 42, there must be a reduced speed limit going through Rowena, right?
There is.
So does it return to full speed before this turn, this corner? Because I mean, if it's 30 and then it's 65 and then it's back to 30, it's a little bit, sounds like a speed trap.
But when we go, when you make a turn off of an intersection, at that point, there should be signage again for what the new roadway is signed at. And our county roads are signed at 55 miles an hour for the majority of the way. So there is, there's still a difference in that, in that speed limit there, so.
Thank you. That'll be on next week's agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning notices, there are none. There are no petitions for compromise lien. We are at the opportunity for public comment. Good morning.
Good morning, commission. My name's Dan Kipley, and I am a part of Leadership Sioux Falls 35. And I'm here to offer kudos to the commission, as well as the sheriff and the staff and the Metro Communications. We had an opportunity as a class to tour the old jail, the old, old jail and the new jail. Did I get that right?
You got it right.
Okay. But the staff did an excellent job of providing a tour. We had a chance to have a meal at the jail. And we had a chance to visit Metro Communications. And we're happy to hear that Metro Communications is going to get a little more spaced on the road. They are rather cozy there. But overall, the jail itself and the tour was very informative. And I just wish more taxpaying constituents could get a chance to see how their taxpayers' dollars are invested because it was fascinating. And I want to also give special recognition to Sheriff Milstead and the entire staff that gave that tour. You could tell that they are very knowledgeable and that they are very dedicated to the work that they do. And so you should be very proud of the group and very proud of your work for that jail addition. It was fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you. You're never too old for Leadership Sioux Falls. Thank you, Dan. Anybody else here for public comment? All righty, moving on then to regular business. Briefing on the inmate population trends for Lincoln and Minnehaw Counties. We have Mr. Garnos on Zoom, I believe. So good morning, sir. And I think you're still on mute. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now.
All right. Good morning. I had a presentation set up there. Is it possible for somebody there to pull it up or run it and me just get next or something? Or have you clicked through the slides for me?
It is up and.
I don't think we have slides, though. We just have this report.
We have a PowerPoint.
Oh.
Document, 112-page document.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, there was a PowerPoint presentation. I think I also sent it up as a PDF because it was, it's just mostly graphs and tables.
We have 108 pages. Are you going to hit them all?
Yeah, yeah, just briefly, though.
We're looking.
Okay. This would have been sent earlier in the month. Now, I have it here. I can always, you know, resend it to somebody there or reemail it or something.
So are they the same graphs that you have at the end of your report, like 32, 33, 34? Their very end of your report? Because we do have a lot of graphs and data at the very end.
Maybe that's it.
It's included in your report. It's like page.
Right, right. Nobody wants to see 100 pages of inmate trends and projections.
Dewey, can you see what's up on our screen?
Yes, sir.
Is that, are we in the right place?
No, this is still just in the document, I believe.
Yeah, that's all we have is your report. We do not have a separate PowerPoint.
Okay, do you want me to send you one?
Staff is telling us that they can't put it on that quickly, so it just doesn't do any good.
Okay.
Might be how cool if you can.
If I can pull it up from my screen and show it to you from here.
That'd be great.
Can we, a little screen sharing from his end? We're going to try to get you screen sharing from your end.
Is there somebody that has got, that we heard in a lot of feedback? Could somebody put their mic on mute possibly?
We're getting a lot of extra voices in the background here. I'm going to ask anybody that's on Zoom to mute at this point.
It must be his.
Usually when the video's full screen, it's on the options at the bottom of the screen when the video's full screen.
Isn't the full screen?
Can't he share his screen?
I click on settings. Share screen on the left, the fourth option down. Yeah, show all sharing options. Click advance.
How about if we just use the executive summary?
Okay, so do you have a reading grade? I'm checking.
We'll give it another minute or so here, see if we can get this to work.
Yeah, let me know if there's anything I can do to help.
Mr. Garnos, we seem to be getting a lot of feedback off of your screen. Is there a way for you to? I noticed you had headphones on, so I was wondering if there's a way for you to eliminate that background noise.
Does this help any? I know I got one person in the background.
Yeah, we hear her talking frequently.
Oh. This is the joy of having two people working from home.
Okay, we're not, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to get this to work with the technology on our end. So we have a choice of, you can kind of brief us on what you have without the pictures or we can do this another time. Which would you prefer?
I'm at, I'm at your disposal, but unless it's something critical and time-sensitive, I think I'd rather wait and show you the pictures. I'm kind of a graphs and tables guy.
Yep, I'm a visual guy, too. So I think most of us here would prefer to wait and do it when we can look at it. One week, two weeks? What are we thinking?
Whatever you need.
Commissioner Karski.
I won't be here next week, so I'd prefer to wait two weeks. So if we could wait till May, I think that would be 4th. Should be a Tuesday?
Yep.
Okay, so let's wait till May 4th. And we will have our staff get ahold of you to make sure that we have the capability to get this done properly. So our apologies and we'll figure it out and make it work. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Let me know what I can do.
You bet. Okay, moving on then to our emergency management presentation by Jason Gierman. Morning, Jason.
Morning. Jason Gierman, Minnehaw County Emergency Management. Here to give you a brief presentation on some of the functions of emergency management. Here's a long definition of what I do. When people ask me, my kids want to know what I do. It's, I basically tell them I find things for people. And if they need something, I try and get it for them. And that's the simple of an explanation I can give them. Jack of all trades, master of none, maybe that would describe it, too. Minnehaw County is kind of unique as far as emergency management because we host a lot of volunteer groups. And what I'm into is police reserves. As you can see, there's 50 of them right now. They put in about a minimum of eight hours a month. And they've put in about 3,500 hours this year. But as you can see in the slide, on a normal year, that would be around 9,000. And that's due to the, due to the COVID and the lack of work for them because they wouldn't let them ride with the officers. And then a lot of events were canceled this year. So one of the things that we had to do was get with Sheriff Milstead, and we had to write a letter to the state to allow them to have less hours because it's state mandated hours. So they gave him an exemption this year, which was very helpful. And the state worked with us well on that. This is the wrong one. I don't know how that got in there, but he's our liaison, obviously, for fire. This is not the right presentation, so I think I can remember what it was. So the rescue squad, we got about 15 members. Over the years, you know, most of the equipment that the rescue squad has had has kind of, has kind of been the stuff that other agencies don't have. Well, now a lot of the other, now the other agencies have a lot of this equipment. So what we're trying to do is get them kind of more of a skill set in water rescue, search and rescue. And obviously, they still help the fire departments. And they help them with, we're trying to work on credentialing with the fire departments to where they can go out and assist the fire chiefs in maybe managing the fire and giving the fire chiefs some free time to where they can come out and help and say, okay, these are the people that's here, this is the equipment that's here, so forth and so on. Dive team, they put in about 550 hours this year. And basically, it is what it is that, you know, they do a lot of recovery work. They do a lot of training with ice dives. And, you know, they're, they weren't affected by COVID this year, but thank God we didn't have the calls that others had in different counties this year with the ice, the ice issues that they had. And then they also work closely with Lake County. Here's some other things that emergency management does. Communications, a weather service liaison. So what we do is Doug Blomker and I, one of us is going to go up to the National Weather Service if we have tornadoes. Unfortunately, the National Weather Service is closed. They don't allow people in because they're all working from home. But in a normal year, that's, one of us would go up there, one of us would maybe go to Metro. We coordinate with Regan Smith, who his designation is to go to Metro. So we kind of coordinate with each other to make sure that we have all those bases covered and, you know, if we're available. And luckily, there's been no disasters this year, no damage assessments. And it's been a quiet year, so we'll keep it that way. Obviously, issues with fire. But, you know, that's, that's been kind of taken care of itself. So hopefully, we won't have to deal with a fire ban this year. A couple of things, there were some slides on the ambulance. So obviously, ambulances have had a kind of a difficult year this year. You were here when the Humboldt ambulance gave their presentation. Their calls have been way up. You know, some of the things that, you know, they're in need of are, obviously, the radios. We're going to a different radio system, the state is, by 2023 or late 2022, I believe. And so they're scraping to find these radios because they're fairly expensive. And the fire is in this, kind of the same category as that. So fire, obviously, they need a lot more of these radios. And so they're working on getting some grants. And we have helped them on a couple of grants that will give them a minimal amount. But these radios are anything from, you know, 2,500 to five grand apiece. So, you know, 20,000 doesn't go a long ways when they need, when they need that many radios. And one of the things that emergency management and the sheriff have been doing is kind of gradually, the last three years, we've been gradually purchasing these things through grants and so forth. And hopefully, we'll be set and it won't cost, we won't need any funding as far as budget-wise in the future for radios. And that kind of leads me to one of the grants on my next part of the agenda. But emergency management, we go to the rural fire chiefs meetings, express our concerns. I'm obviously the liaison between them and you and just try and help them out with whatever they need. And it's a hardworking group and they need volunteers. So anybody listening, please, please volunteer if you can. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Questions?
Jason, how many radios are you looking to replace?
We have about 16 portables to 20 portables. And then about five to seven in-car radios. But most of them have been purchased already, so we're compliant. They're sitting and waiting to be programmed and used. Sheriff's Office is going to have another bunch that they need. But we've been luckily enough to use the Homeland Security Grant to fund that.
How about the rural people? I mean, you're probably talking your office specifically with the radios. How about our rural communities for fire and ambulance? How far behind are they in getting their radios?
They're working on it. And the difference is, is their radios may be a little less expensive than what we need. They're working on it, and the difference is, is their radios may be a little less expensive than what we need as far as the sheriff's office is concerned with encryption and the other bells and whistles that we need. But they're working on it. I think they'll be okay by then, but they're going to be in probably some need of funding at some sort, whether that be fundraising or other grants that we're going to keep searching for.
Mr. Chairman. So going back to the scholarship issue for fire, and we offer a scholarship to people that study EMS and stuff, right?
What we do, so if the fire department puts on a new, brings on a new person, and they want to be an EMT, my office will pay half of that.
If they pass the test.
If they pass the test. And then my office also offers EMR classes where we pay for the EMR, it's just a step below the EMT. So we'll pay for that. We did a class over a year ago, but then we couldn't do the class because of COVID. And so we're looking at doing other classes fall, and there's some good interest in that. And what we've also developed, instead of they don't have to take the whole EMT class over again, they can stop where they left off with EMR and go to the EMT level.
If I may, so potentially, a volunteer can be reimbursed for some of their out-of-pocket expenses for getting the qualifications needed to be in those volunteer departments?
Yeah, and that's the whole intent of this, is to try and bolster that volunteer group and get people out there that are EMT-qualified so they can, you know, respond from their house. Or if they get a call, they can be, you know, they're the closest one there, whether they're an ambulance member or not. You know, there's ways for them to be notified of that, so.
Mr. Chairman. So Jason, a thing that's little known in the public arena is that as the emergency management person, you have some superpowers when it comes to disasters, where you become the, you know, I cannot order sandbags, for example, during a flood. They won't be reimbursed by FEMA, but if you order them, then they can be. I don't remember what the test is I'm supposed to be taking. Do I get reimbursed for that? Anyway, though, I think that's something that the public should learn more about at some point. And, you know, I guess, can you describe your superpowers a little further?
Well, the disasters seem to follow me. Maybe that's the problem. The, you know, on a note like that, I've had a couple of high school students come in this year, and I actually had a college student do a, wanted to do like a paper on emergency management, which it's kind of interesting that it's coming in an awareness now in that educational system, that this is what emergency management is, and people are now wanting to follow a career in this. But I never heard about it in high school. I guess I didn't know what it was, and, you know. So it's kind of interesting to see that.
So other people want your superpowers, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. It comes with a cost.
No kryptonite. Quick question. So there's the dive team, there's the rescue squad, there's the police reserve. Then there's also the rural fire and rural ambulances. If somebody wants to be involved in one of those, do all applications come through you? Or if I want to be on the fire department in Colton, I got to go to the Colton?
So what happens is, is the rural fire has their fire chief's website, and you can go on there and fill out an application. A lot of people will contact me about volunteering, and if they live in a certain community, I can refer them to the fire department. Or if the fire department takes somebody on that, you know, somebody from Sioux Falls may be interested in that, they'll say, hey, maybe you want to be a rescue squad because, you know, you're in Sioux Falls, and that's where it's based out of. You're not going to be able to make the calls out here if you're living in Sioux Falls. You're not going to be, get there in time. And I also do the backgrounds for the rural fires. So if they get a new member, obviously, with my connections with the sheriff's office and my previous job of doing those, so I do them for the fire department to make sure that, you know, there's nothing bad in their history, so.
So they can start with you, or they can go for the fire department?
Whatever, whatever happens. That's why we keep communications with each other and have the meetings.
And we have a very active, I think the dive team's probably the one that everybody wants to be on, right?
Oh, yeah. There's a waiting list for that.
Is that right? Okay, okay. Take special people, and we've, you know, to do the work that they do. So thank you for, thanks to all of them for what they do, and thank you for the presentation. And I know we're going to go right into an authorization for the chair to sign amendment number one to the 2020 LEMP sub-recipient agreement. Want to explain that?
I'm not sure which one is number one, or number, the other one. Does it matter? The radios, and one is for the AV equipment?
The second one is the COVID. COVID-19 supplemental grant.
That's the second one. The first one is to the LEMP sub-recipient agreement.
Okay. They're both similar, so I will do the, this is for, so I was in here previously on a similar one where I enhanced the audiovisual equipment at the emergency management building. And this is for something similar for the commission office. So what happened was, we use the CARES Act funding for wages for my office and the sheriff's office. So there's extra money at the state level, and they applied for, and you could apply for a grant. It's a 50-50 match because the LEMPG is 50-50 funded with my salary. So what they did is allowed us to apply for grants. I was talking with Monty one day about, is there a need? And he mentioned the commission upgrades that they were going, so I applied for that grant. And Commissioner Bender reviewed it, and we decided to go forward with it, and it was accepted. And so what the state is asking to do is just sign that contract.
Which I think is item 13.
Yep.
Item 12 that we're on is the one about radios.
Radios?
Yeah.
Okay. Similar situation. It's through the same process, the same grant. And what this is, is obviously, I just discussed this with the issue with radios. And I had the money in my budget for one radio, so I thought, you know, I'm going to apply for the grant, and we'll get two for one. And that was approved, so I think I'm about to the end of the radios that I need for emergency management. And basically, this is just enhancing that, and I'm here to ask you to approve that.
A motion to approve amendment one to the 2020 LEMP sub-recipient agreement.
Second. Thank you, commissioners. Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So the next is a sub-recipient agreement for the 2020 LEMPG COVID-19 supplemental grant, which I think you kind of covered them both, just, right?
I'll make a motion to approve that one.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Look for, let's see, we got Joe Bosman here, or, there he is on the screen. You're muted, Joe. There you go.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. I have in front of me this morning a request from the sheriff's office to submit an authorization for an application on our 2022 South Dakota Highway Safety Grant. What this is, this is an annual grant that our sheriff's office has participated in, where we receive funding from the South Dakota Office of Highway Safety, and we can use that money for overtime funding or sobriety checkpoints, saturation enforcement, speed and seatbelt enforcement for our deputies to go out and make sure the roads in Minnehaw County are safer. There is a soft match for funding, which is just means that I have to track how many hours that people work and submit those monthly to the state. Not a heavy lift for us, but it is beneficial for us to get that sort of information out there.
Motion to approve applying for the 2022 Highway Safety Grant?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And moving on to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Mattson. Morning, Warden.
Good morning. Mike Mattson, Warden of Minnehaw County Jail. I'm here today asking the commission to sign a service agreement with Accurate Controls, Inc. This is a service agreement that covers the maintenance and service of our security electronics that we did in the jail. This is phased, so this is kind of like the second part. Some of the stuff is coming off a warranty, so we need to get the service agreement going.
Make a motion to approve the electronic service agreement with Accurate Controls.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. I guess kind of procedurally, I have a question. Do we typically do service agreements? I mean, is that standard to do? Is this to our advantage?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. If we don't have the service agreement and parts need to be replaced, or they need to come on site for whatever reason, reprogramming, we're getting better rates with the service agreement than if we didn't have a service grant.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Morning, Bill. We have various museum items to declare a surplus plus from Minnehaw to Lake County. They like our, they like our old stuff.
Good morning, commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museum. Yeah, I'm asking, there are 10 roller cabinets. They're steel. We got them, they were on the surplus list, I think, from the Register of Deeds office in the late 80s. And we've used them for 30 years. And what's been stored has been moved into some new cabinets, and we need to move them out. And the Lake County Historical Society, which is a private nonprofit, would use them for the same way we've been using them for the last 30 years. So I ask that they be declared surplus and given to Lake County Historical Society.
I'll make the motion, and then I have a comment.
Second with a comment.
We have a motion and a couple of comments. Go ahead, Commissioner Barth.
After 30 years, aren't they an artifact also?
These aren't the only ones we have, just the ones we can get out the door now.
My comment was, Bill, thanks for putting the picture on the end of the agenda item. It was just nice, because I was like, I wonder what they look like. So thank you for putting the picture on.
Looks like an artifact to me.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Ah, roll call, and it says that right here. Call the roll. Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hi, Hurd? Aye. Bender?
Aye.
Aye. Now it carries again. All right. Thank you, Rhonda. Motion to declare various detox items as surplus for donation from the Minnehaw County to the Link Triage Center. Or the Link. Carrie, are you around? Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Commissioner Carrie from Human Services. So before you today is a request to utilize some items that we previously had been utilizing in the operations of detox here on campus in the public safety building. All the items listed are basically items that are old, that we've been utilizing for a long, long time. But they're really primarily for storage and simple things, not having a lot of value, so to speak, in regards to something that we would utilize elsewhere on campus. And so our request today is to take those items from surplus and donate those to the operations of the Link, which will be our new Triage Center, opening end of May, beginning of June. So if you have questions, I can field those.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
And a second. Call the roll.
Barth?
Aye.
Hi, Hurd? Aye. Bender? Aye. Karstki?
Aye.
Senator?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks.
Okay, look for a motion to authorize the highway department to purchase materials, supplies, parts, and equipment through various procurement contracts. Shannon, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent, acting as the superintendent interim. This is an annual item that we present to you. The reason we do this is we can purchase large items, or items exceeding $25,000 off of other pre-occurred contracts, and so that alleviates us from having to do the public advertising and awarding. So it's of great benefit, and I'll just kind of read from the agenda item here because it's kind of important. State contracts are administered through the Office of Procurement Management. This state office also coordinates procurement through other agencies, such as the Western States Contracting Alliance and the National Association of State Procurement Officials, also known as NASPO. And then I mentioned the benefits of how we can purchase these items. So we do this to the extent possible. We also purchase off of other counties' bids, and I'll go through those here in a second, the ones that we do. And then I'll also touch on an interesting one at the bottom of that list. So there's quite a bit of documentation that goes with these items. We have them on file. And if anybody's interested in the background of these, or the auditors perhaps, all the information is there. So here we have 11 items that we typically, well, 10 items that we typically buy off these kinds of contracts, other people's bids. On the right, you can see their master agreement numbers, and those are useful if you want to look them up. But that, again, we also have those on file. So there's tires, Goodyear Bridgestone Continental, that's through a South Dakota bid. Fuel is also a South Dakota bid. Our current, our nearby vendors are Volan Oil and Harms Oil. Mastic is what we use to fill joints with bituminous material. This year is new. Midstates, typically that has been Brock White. Number four is Building Shop Supplies. That's through NASPO. Fasten Allen Granger. Auto Parts, again, NASPO, NAPA, and O'Reilly. Filters, Istate, they've been here ever since I've been here, so they keep getting that one. Digital radios, Leave It Communications through Sioux Falls Two Way Radio Service. LED light bars, Whelan is the national with the local representative being Sound Off Signal. Steel culverts is a county bid. They bid annually through Beetle County, and we are able to buy those from Trimmer with Steel at the bid prices. Similarly, Lincoln County has done a concrete bid this year, and they've awarded all three manufacturers that we have access to, which is great. So we can kind of go and, whatever side of the county we're on, whatever plant is closest by, we can buy off those bids, which are Hancock, Semcast, and also Fretara. And then lastly, on the one, Fred, our Fleet Services Manager, found out on Amazon. Utah awarded a publicly advertised bid to Amazon. I don't think there's any item that we would buy off Amazon that exceeds $25,000, but should that need arise, there it is, and it's kind of a new one. And so just a point of interest on that one. So I guess our request, and the agenda item is, to authorize the highway department to purchase on said various materials and contracts.
All right. Questions for Shen. Commissioner Aburger.
I just had highlighted the Amazon one because I was curious. So then, when it's a contract, are you getting a discount through Amazon because it's a contract?
Oh, boy.
Sorry. If it's, I would have called you, but I didn't get that far.
That's cool. The material that we have on file talks about how Amazon is guaranteed lowest maximum price through its contracting community.
That's good enough, Shannon.
Yeah, it's been vetted by the state of Utah, and like I said, it's an interesting one. And I thought about not putting it on here, but then again, there might be a need by another agency in the county to purchase something, and they find it cheapest on Amazon. And so here it is, permission to purchase off a procurement contract through the state of Utah.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Shannon. All right. Jacob Beck? Good morning, again.
Morning. This agenda item is an amendment for MC 2001, which is construction administration for culverts that were to be installed in 2020. We had to push that project back to 2021. We did get one covert installed last year on a road where the road actually collapsed. Most notable out of these three locations is we are replacing the outlet to Wall Lake this year. We will coordinate that around Dakota Man and the Parks Department for an appropriate time to get that work done. But this amendment just allows additional time for construction administration. There is no additional cost associated with this amendment.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, and you get the last one.
So this next amendment is for MC 1710, which is the design for the reconstruction- So this next amendment is for MC 1710, which is the design for the reconstruction of County Highway 149, which is south of the city of Colton, down to County Highway 122, 254th Street. The amendment itself is for twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. That allows for some updating to the plans and specs. This design originally started in 2017. Since that time, we have updated some of our protocol at the county, and we have also completed the right-of-way negotiations along this stretch of road. And with right-of-way negotiations come some changes to design, where we're going to put the fence, where the culverts go, where the approaches go, how far out we need to grade, so. And it's been three-plus years since we started the design on this, so there is going to be some inefficiencies that way. But overall, I really appreciate being able to start designs this early because we can get all of the right-of-way done, we can get the utilities moved before construction happens, so it's nice.
All righty, questions, motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob, motion carries. Onto the point of liaison reports from the commissioners. Anybody been liaising? Commissioner Iberger.
Last week, I missed the commission meeting as I was in Rapid City attending the state juvenile conference. We focused, it was attended by Nebraska and South Dakota, there was probably about two hundred people there for that two-day conference. We focused on diversity and alternatives. I also attended the state JDAI state meeting and the state Council of Juvenile Services meetings where we looked at data and other programming and grant opportunities.
All righty. Commissioner Bender.
I just would give an update that last week I was able to attend the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge, and so we're really getting meat on the bones with the work that we're able to move forward with the latest funding from MacArthur. Lots of exciting initiatives going on, and it will be great to see the first class go through some of the leadership training and hear back how that influences those kids' lives, and hopefully, it will help them to stay out of the system and find productive avenues that benefit the rest of us with their gifts. So, good meeting.
We all have our kind of wheelhouse of things we work on and appreciate the updates, so thank you. All righty, moving on to new business. Any old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
I just want to make a bit of a personal comment. In nineteen eighty, I went to a breakfast with Walter Mondale, then Vice President, and sat next to him at a table of maybe ten people. And he told us a couple of days early that we were going to boycott the Moscow Olympics because of their invasion of Afghanistan. Boy, how things change. And he passed away, and I thought he was a pretty good guy.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioner. All right, I'm going to look for a motion to recess the meeting. Let's go to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second, so we're going to recess for, is five minutes enough, Melinda? Five minutes? Okay, we'll be back in five minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. We are at recess.